Recording.
Okay, I could call this meeting to order. Hampden Board Selectmen on June 21st, 2022. Please rise to the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America. We are the republic which understands one nation under God.
Is anyone else recording this meeting besides us? Chief, you don't want to?
I'm all set. Thank you, sir.
So we don't have Whip City yet, so. Oh, I'm sorry. Didn't see you coming in.
Gentlemen, how are you?
Good.
Good. Would you mind coming up to, let's skip over the minutes since we have these chats here. We'll go to the table. Hopefully the mics work.
The IGA for you. So at least you can see where we're coming from. Appreciate the opportunity and to be on your agenda. Thank you.
We know you, but for the minutes, introduce yourselves.
I'm Brian Sullivan. I'm the Sales Manager for Westfield Gas and Electric, Lipstick Fiber.
My name is Christopher LaRitto. I'm the Telecom Superintendent for the state.
So Craig, fill us over here.
Well, pretty much I asked these gentlemen to come on down and give us a run through of what we're looking for. I'm sure some people know we received a $250,000 grant for fiber optics in town. And I believe that will get us started on a portion of the make-ready procedure. And hopefully we can determine take rates and stuff from there. See if fiber optics would be a viable option for the town of Hampden. I figure who better to kind of go over the process than them.
We'll take it from there. So well, I appreciate it. And I think what tonight is, is a culmination of the next step as far as Hampden is concerned. We put an awful lot of work into getting to this point right here. And here's where we really can move forward and start. One, planning for municipal life plan in Hampden. Have the Whip City Fiber be a partner with you through an governmental agreement. It wasn't easy getting a $250,000 grant, so I give a lot of credit to you for reaching out and doing that. And it does, as Craig says, get you that first step, which is poll applications throughout the town. Real quick definition of poll application, so everyone understands what we're talking about is literally every single telephone poll in Hampden will be prompted, looked at, assessed. Some polls are fine. Some polls are going to need work by the incumbent carriers, the National Grids or the Horizons of the world. And then we, on behalf of Hampden, if you choose us to move forward, will actually work on your benefit to go out and literally walk these polls with those companies. Some of those polls have been in town maybe forever and should have been replaced a long time ago. We don't want them to replace those polls on your dime. Others are, you know, questionable and that's the fight we get to have. But it's really the first piece in building this entire network is to start the infrastructure. The infrastructure is going to start.
Inventory first to understand the application.
And I think the other benefit of having them here is I've talked to them and I kind of know the process of what they're going through. I wanted to allow the other selectmen here to kind of answer any questions, ask any questions and kind of see, you know, kind of a whole board buy-in, you know, rather than one individual trying to lead the charge, so.
Craig, for the next one, should the committee be here as well or you've already, that's already happened?
We've met with the committee. John Plaster's here, so he's part of the committee. We went over, answered, asked a bunch of questions. They answered a bunch of questions, so.
So they're comfortable?
Yeah, they're comfortable.
Bob, one question for you is, were there any, knowing how these grants work, were there any caveats, any contingencies, anything we need to worry about, strings attached to the grant?
Focus on town buildings. But in that process, you get a lot of work done. And I have one question before we go too far. There's new middle mile money coming out of the infrastructure legislation in Washington. Are you up to date on that? Do you recommend that we go? That's a late summer application and a decision next, I think it's next March. Are you aware of other communities that you serve trying to get some of that?
The answer to that is yes, we're paying attention to it. There's a lot of unknowns associated with that when it's going to be released and what it's going to be for, much like the Community Compact Grant that you applied for now. Actually, I take that back. The Community Compact Grant was specific in regards to broadband for municipal buildings, in which case your application applies to that. The next part is going to be infrastructure and they're looking at maybe getting debt written into that too. So that as you're moving forward and the towns are paying this. And I hope I'm not speaking out of turn because there is so many moving parts in regards to this. But the federal government portion of this. And I think, Bob, your question is, should you be applying? Should you be doing it? The answer to that is absolutely.
Yeah.
Because that money is being used, especially in the infrastructure of places like Western Mass. We presently manage 19 hill towns also. And that's, it's a little different story than Hampden, but very similar in regards to Western Mass versus Eastern Mass and what we had available here. So anything to do with federal monies being built for infrastructure slash broadband is something that you could continuously. You know, you do the first step and as this is going through the process, and we're there to help you along with that too and the assistance.
Craig, we get a little overview on basically the timeframe and the obligation to the town. As this inventory goes through, are we, what point are we in so deep we need to go forward?
I think based on what they've alluded to and advised on, that with the first portion of make-ready, would you guys be able to give a take rate at that point? Was it after the first portion?
Actually, I also have this thing to add, and it is estimates.
Yeah, yeah.
It's numbers, but it's basically breaking down a bond package that you would apply for in regards to moving this forward. So a quick little history of what, how you would do this is obviously you've already done the part of the town is very interested in it. The people, the residents, the people that are going to own this. The second part is to inventory what's out there and find out exactly how many polls are there, what the construction cost is going to be. So to get to your question, you can get into part one and do the poll application. And when that information comes back, then everyone sees the real numbers and kind of do it. You can say, we're not ready for this, or we're out for, as most of the times I have just said, the hill towns have been moved forward, you know, quicker than we want. So you're not built, you're not, by signing off on the initial part, you're not locked in forever. You can, you can stop at any time the town wants.
And I think that's where we would use the grant money, would start that initial phase and kick it off and see where it goes from there. Obviously with any bond, we'd have to go to town meeting for approval, so that wouldn't happen until at least, what? Annual town meeting next April, or next May.
What we can do too is we can focus the applications on achieving what you need for the grant for infrastructure for the municipal town offices. Focus all the poll applications on that, at least the initial one, so that if you get all of them back and you only need to do what satisfies the grant, then that's what we're focused on.
When you talk about Craig, next April town, or May town meeting, the inventory you're planning on doing, is it realistic that would be completed in that time or?
I'm going to let Chris answer that. The answer probably is no. You pick the application.
At least the application part can be done, the inventory of polls, writing out the entire town. We are able to do West Springfield in about a month, and that was double your poll size. So we should have the same ability to do so. We do have a project manager that they take into account all aspects of polls when they do the write-out. They look at how the poll, they give it a rating, so from their own standpoint, they can kind of tell which ones they're going to need. You have some documented, go back with the utilities or ones that, oh no, these are going to be perfectly fine and we're going to have very minimal make-ready. Yeah, I don't see that being an issue by, what was your next town meeting?
Next May.
Oh yeah, I mean, that's a pretty long time. We could have at least a portion up to the poll applications and readiness, and we could actually submit if you don't vote choose it.
I'm going to cut you off, I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
I'm looking at page 19 where we have, it looks like, I'm guessing, the first phase of make-ready?
Correct, or in poll application, so.
Yeah, total poll application, so it looks like our grant money is going to be able to cover pretty much all that first phase.
That's right.
Okay.
Now, the make-ready is an estimate.
You're right.
I mean, that's worst case scenario, just so, you know, I know there's always sticker shock with that going forward.
That's the second part of make-ready, right?
That's the second part. That's the part you choose though afterwards, after the utility comes back, they give you what that make-ready cost is. Maybe we're able to negotiate down a good portion of that and then we come to the natural number. So you guys would have to look at and move on, I guess.
When I said you wouldn't be ready, that's the part I was going to do.
The second half?
The second part.
Okay.
The first part, which covered is under your grant or, you know, right around that number.
Yeah.
Is, is perfect timing.
Right.
Because you'll be able to inventory and know what's going on.
What are they doing to make ready?
They estimate basically what it's going to take to allow 12 inches of space for the municipal plant to be installed on the pole. So you need so much space by National Electric Safety Code. You're required to, you're required to have 40 inches from the nearest electrical utility and 12 inches from the nearest communication utility to allow a space on the pole that is owned and operated by either Comcast, Charter, Horizon, or Municipal Fiber. And then the make-ready is to make that space on a pole so that it meets all height requirements, over roadway crossing, various other things. So a lot of the infrastructure, if it's, you know, shorter poles, that space is not there to meet that.
Everybody's got a zone on the pole based on, if you had, for instance, a three base line which shifted the single base down, you might have a gap that doesn't have enough fiber.
Exactly.
And then when you talk about that 12 inches, so if there's poles that don't meet that, that's on who?
Well, that's what it gives a negotiation.
Okay.
Because if it's a pole that is still within reasonably huge lifespan, then it's going to be, but if it's one that's 50 years old, you know, then it's a negotiation back and forth. There's still some cost to physically move the plant, but the replacement of that pole becomes kind of something that the utility needs to take.
Okay. And have you run into that before in the past?
Yes.
That's, that's, that's every town has run into that. That's absolutely the first part. Because you're going to have some poles that need replacing. But you're also going to have some poles that need wires moved to make that space. So we say, no, if you guys just move up seven inches and these guys move down, there's room for the municipal, you don't have to replace that pole. Well, we think we got to replace poles. No, you don't. So that's the negotiation part that we work on there. We obviously want to do that whole portion for at least about a month.
Right.
It just seems like, it seemed like they've been resistant. I mean, Don, how long was that, we rolled double poles down Allen Street? I don't know if it's personnel, you know, things in other parts they're focusing on instead. It just seems like those things are not very high on our radar.
And I think that was in Hampden.
But of course, you don't need it done until the build-out either, just like you say, okay, the inventory, it's not like you're actually needed to replace until you're in zone six or, that'd be two years down.
Exactly.
Could you quickly explain about the zones for those who are watching?
So the zones are like a fiber surface area footprint. What it does is it provides a set amount of customers that are along a set path in the town or in a section of the town. And that kind of makes up your, based on how the optical network from the optical components at the head end to how all the passive components, which are also at the head end, but they allocate the fibers accordingly. You want to try to keep a, so many feet of fibers to so many customers split ratio. The reason you do that is you can keep the density on the pole down, pole hip, pole break, stuff like that can actually be minimized because you're dealing with smaller wires, smaller fiber. You kind of split it up into 288 because that's kind of the industry standard right now. You can split it a few more ways if you want to so choose, but it seems to be the optimal, especially with the speeds that you're looking to focus at.
If you look on page 21 of what we cast out, there's a picture there, that's your fiber, your FSA is your fiber service areas.
As you're engineering determined, you want to be between that 200 and 288 space to allow some growth, also allow maybe customers who want to add a commercial account onto their personal, stuff like that. So that allows for growth in those areas, but it also takes the most logical paths through your town.
You could do that by service area by service area. You could do my house first.
You told us too that.
Your neighborhood had the highest take rate.
Yeah.
But again, that's what we're referring to is that there's a timing type thing, like you're not doing every zone at once.
That's right.
So with nine zones, you're looking at a build-out period of ballpark.
Four to six months per zone.
Right.
You can have some actual overlap with those zones.
Couple of years.
Yeah, so you're looking at a couple of years.
What about underground lines? Because there's, I think, a section of town that is underground.
Yeah, you have seven miles of underground.
Also, there's newer subdivisions.
Exactly, and also some of the core locations that would have to be taken into account during design and then costing of that. And we can give you costs because we are going up the bid for an underground contractor ourselves right now. So we can give you what the current market rate is for trenching.
Now, is there a point where underground becomes cheaper than having to replace poles and doing pole inspections or anything like that? No? I was figuring if you could skip that whole phase of doing pole inspections and just put everything underground, would that be cheaper?
You're going to spend probably 55% more.
Okay.
Especially when you have the infrastructure with poles there. There is some spots where, yeah, maybe cheaper to install a orange conduit and run the cables underground for a section of it. But it would be, it would be something where you're, you're really stuck with regards to aerial construction.
And to piggyback off of that, some people have asked me, and just so for public record, we have it out in the open, customer service and maintenance and stuff like that, something happens in a storm, tree comes down and takes down a section of fiber. Who's responsible for that? Is that fall on the town or would you be in any way helping with doing that?
As your network operator, we would assist you to repair that, using either emergency crews or internal crews.
And that, that would be charged to the town now, they'd be separate outside of scope?
Yeah, you would know all the cost of a remat when it happens.
Okay. So it's not like we're up in the air looking for somebody to come service it? The partnership with a lot of you guys do service and.
Keep a free emergency crew on retainer from splicers to construction. And those are shared across all the towns we work with right now. Highly unlikely that a storm that's going to impact the Berkshires is going to have the same effect in Hampden and vice versa, you know? You guys might have a storm that rolls through that comes out of Connecticut that might be a little bit more impactful than a storm that hits the outskirts of Berkshires.
And, I'm sorry.
Now, the bulk of your customers in the Berkshires or that area, the hill towns?
They expand the whole way. The closest one to you guys is New Salem and Wendell.
West Springfield.
And West Springfield.
And now West Springfield, right. We have 15, just under 15,000 customers in Hampden. Westfield is about half of that, and the hill towns is the other half. And we also are now building out West Springfield.
Sizable chunk.
And which is the second biggest compared to Westfield.
Yeah, I think, you know, the business component of that equals Westfield in terms of, obviously, data requirements.
Now, I know you're expanding out to New Salem, you said, and West Springfield. Are you able to maintain that level of customer service based on the amount you're growing or would you just grow with that as well?
We have grown with it.
Yeah, and we actually grew that.
Okay.
So that, that exists. We're not building out New Salem, we've already.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The 19 hill towns are actually, we're on our last one, which is Beckett. We're just finishing up now. There's three FSAs left. And then all of the FSAs in the 19 hill towns that we're going to pick out. So actually, again, the timing of this is perfect because our customer service and our billing is ready to roll.
Ramping up.
To the next one being West Springfield.
The sheet you handed out is just the cost of bonding versus the income. And it looks like you're projecting that the town would actually end up in the black by 153,000. This does not include the cost, I would assume, what fiber would charge for maintenance, annual maintenance.
Well, that we, so what we have is a two-tier structure. Your annual maintenance is going to be based on write-outs and inspections of the plant. If you guys try to buy something, you're going to see something, you're going to, you're going to mention to us. On average, most hill towns, we estimated them to hold a $26,000 retainer. That seems to have been the key mark, the most recent being Wendell, they had three events, but the total events cost close to 20 grand. So yes, it doesn't take into that into account, but the retainage is built into the overall of operational expense.
And the walls open. If it's unused, those walls.
That's right.
And your estimate, they had a 50% take rate?
That's a 50% take rate of, you know.
It would be, you know, net positive.
That's right. That'd be 990 customers.
And you think that's conservative? Yeah, I would. Two people are talking about they want that in service.
We in Westfield when we did it, we're looking for a 40 to 50% take rate, and we're now at over 70.
Yeah, some of our numbers were based on 30% really because Comcast was there, streaming hadn't really given stride. So there's a lot of things that worked in our favor.
I know Katrine's not here to answer the question that I have next, but this is more for a public comment and for public record. A lot of questions presented were, how do we educate the public that this is not a cable service? This is an internet service? And they would have to find a streaming provider or local television of their own. How would we present that? Would you be able to help with some of that or?
Education and marketing are also part of the package. So we set up seminars or community events where we would have people come to us with, we already know the top 20 questions with it, so we know what is going to be asked. But we have that educational piece for the listeners. So that's another thing that our marketing and our customer service bring along. We, our customer service group, which is 24/7, is 65, has the question, has the answers to the questions when people call in too. Like, I'm not getting good, you know, it's not quick anymore or lights are out or, you know, things like that. They have the answers to that, so we built our customer service in our marketing.
We have a technical support team that will do tech shows and will show them how to use the devices, how to log in, how to basically set up 100% of their service and use it to the maximum of what they can use.
Well, it seems like somebody is, say, my package at home, I have the internet and I have TV. So it's pretty familiar with the internet part that I provide, my TVs, the iPads, things like that. As Craig said, you'd be looking to, your part would take the place of the internet package. Some now video or whatever you want to call it, streaming service slash local would have to replace the charter service, if you will. And those are commonly available.
Oh, yes, and you can month to month bounce around from one to the other and see if you find what you love.
That's it. I know there are plenty of streaming ones, but I think most people would say, how do I get my local channels? Is there that definitely?
Most of the streaming has the local channels now that's there. And there's always the option of buying an Amazon antenna.
The digital antenna.
I do that over my, at my house. It works great. I get my locals.
For free.
Some have gone away unfortunately, but.
I'll put it out there. I made a $200 a month. Will I be able to do better?
Yes. The answer to that is, it's actually will you be able to do better with yourselves? Because you're going to set the price that the residents are going to pay. This is your network. You're going to be handling the money. The money is paid from the residents into the, it goes right into your portal in the town. That money doesn't.
Not just that, but I'm just saying, you know, if I'm looking at this as a bundle package.
Right.
Your bundle or something like that is going to provide a better value for the vast majority of our residents.
Around about, somewhere in the $80.
Better service too. Performance is going to be much of a magnitude higher.
$80, somewhere in that area of $79.95.
Don is looking for a live bass fishing experience.
Bassmasters.
They have that.
What do I get for? What do I get for my $80? What am I getting?
You get a gigabit connection from, to your house and that you can use it as you please, whether it's the computers or the.
Do I, do I have to buy Spectrum or HBO or?
No.
No. You would buy streaming, go ahead.
No, no, you're right. You still have to have some sort of streaming.
I'm just like, I just came over and I just want to, never been in America before, I want to go do some.
Oh, so, well, Bassmaster did on Hulu, so I recommend getting Hulu.
Do I have to pay extra for that?
Unfortunately, yes, but the packages are, you know, about $60 I pay per month along with my $70 to $80 at home for my internet server. I had $140. I was at $235. I got kids, so the experience for them to transition was a lot easier. For me and the wife, yeah, it took a while. We bounced around from Hulu to YouTube to, at one point there was PlayStation View back in the day. So I had all the services and I found the one that fit my watching profile. And then, and there's ways to go online. You can check full websites. I'll give you what antennas, we'll give you what strength services for just over the air stuff. There's a full lookup. You can say whatever show you want. On many of the internet websites assisted with the streaming, that you can get a package that suits you as a video, as a TV watcher.
So for my 80s, I get internet.
In modems and, right?
All that stuff.
You get all the connectivity stuff?
There's no additional charging.
And back to you quickly, it's at a gigabit. What is the typical speed now? What are we?
Do you know what you're getting in the first year here in Hampden?
Ballpark. No, I mean, throw it out there.
Well, I pay for expanded service. I pay for 400 meg service at my house, so 400 down, 20 up. And I'm paying about 100, 120 a month for just internet.
Where, you give it to the up and down.
So that's internet, internet part, like the streaming part, that's choices.
That's choices.
And I think, I think the thing with fiber that people don't realize is you're getting, for the work from home and the business people, you're getting upload speeds that are matched to your download speeds. So you're getting gigabit download, gigabit upload. So for somebody that works from home and doing a lot of data transfers, you know, corporate environment where all they're doing is working virtually, it helps in that aspect.
I almost refer to it as like water. For instance, with a cable, no, you have a water line coming in, but everybody's tapping off and at the end of it, you get a little less water. Whereas fiber is a little more like everybody's getting a stream of water to their home.
Consistent.
But that's why it's a better.
Consistent stream.
And there's no bottleneck?
There's no bottleneck.
And it is a passive obstacle, so what happens is say you have a backup generation at your head end, you have backup generation at your house, you would still maintain it.
Potential for upgrade on your end. What are we looking at for the future? Will this be basically snowballing down to us as you upgrade, as things come down the pike?
What happens when Starlink comes?
I thought they were all crass.
Starlink?
I still think the fiber is going to be more robust, but it's scalable up to 10 gigs currently. We're now focused on 100 gig, we're adding system right now for our own Westfield usage, so.
That's big.
Yes. But we. Yes. The usage of the hill town that it would use, the Western people looking at this guy.
Okay, so you're standing your trust.
Yes.
So where do we go from here, Bob?
That's my question. Where do we go from here? What's, what's our next steps with you guys?
Well, we'd like to move forward with the grant and the poll application. It's a, that part of it is not lengthy, but the next piece is, so as you are going, you know, as you're learning from us and finding out information, you'll be able to go to the next step and keep moving with it. So the IGA that's in front of you is, is an intergovernmental agreement. We're a municipality, you're a municipality. So we have IGAs with all our.
Is this strictly for that part there?
It's actually for the whole part, but part one, which is broken down, which you found on the page behind you.
Yeah.
Part we're talking about today.
So, Craig, if we sign in here, are we, are we signing for the whole thing or just the application?
You would be signing for the whole thing.
Yeah.
But you can opt out after the first thing. How am I trying to say this? If you, if the information that's coming out doesn't suit your needs like it's in the beginning.
Right.
You're able to get out of this at any time based on the fact that you wouldn't be moving forward to do.
As, as any lawyer would say, I'd like to have our counsel just review the contract first.
I totally understand that, right?
Yeah, and I think as long as, you know, we agree as a board to utilize the grant money for that first phase to go forward, as long as, you know, say, if something comes back and we're like, hey, this is going to be a lot more expensive there where the townspeople are starting to be questioning, you know, concerned about it, there's that opt-out at that point.
And the key thing is, as you said, Bob, for the terms of the grant, we need to make sure that the focus of there is also includes municipal buildings. And the key thing is, you said, Bob, for the terms of the grant, we need to make sure that the focus of there is also includes municipal buildings.
Correct.
I mean, I found out. Question, maybe the way to go about this then would be to do an IGA based on just the poll application piece singularly, and have that signed and lawyer look at it.
That's right.
And, and build it to the grant.
Yes.
You know, there's no, nothing there, and then from, as.
The estate's not coming back to us.
It might roll for this, that might be the.
Yeah, clean.
And that, would that be something, would that be feasible?
Office is a good office, and I think what we, you tell us what you think you should be doing, uh, with the focus on municipal buildings.
That's right.
Uh, and then a simple call down to Boston and say, this is what we're proposing to do. Is that acceptable? And, and then we could move ahead.
Okay, and, and as we've spoken, I, I think the way Amden is built in the municipal building that you have.
They're all over the place.
You're really, you're doing exactly what the.
Right, I mean, all the way down Main Street, and then you go all the way out, uh, uh, Summer Road and Allen.
Are they advancing us the money, or is it a reimbursement by?
No, the money's coming in. Yes, it's, it's advanced. It's not one of these standard approaches of the state where you spend your money and then they, they reimburse you, so.
Streaming service to everybody, yeah.
Contract has been signed and sent back, and.
When is the, um?
I think, uh, we'll get a notice from the state that we're approved to move forward, spend money.
Wasn't there a date for receiving of that?
Yeah, we've, we've done that.
Okay.
Yeah, we, we sent it back within the timeline, and, um.
Well, do you think you'd have a new IGA in the next week or some sort of?
I can, we can have one done before the end of the week.
Okay, and then Bob.
And I, and I'll just focus it on the poll application portion of it and have that and.
And before that, to Bob, he can forward it to our attorney, and then hopefully put this to bed in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, if he sends it to the end of the week, hopefully, you know, our attorney could review it next week, and then.
Yeah, but we have.
Looking two weeks.
Our senior center is still using Spectrum service, which I didn't know about until last week.
And so is the fire department.
What?
So is the fire department.
Fire department, yeah.
Highway department.
Highway department.
Yeah, well. Great.
And then we'll learn that as we're doing it. We're gonna uncover things and say, oh, we didn't even know you were doing that. We, we, that happened.
And I just, I wanna make sure Don's question was fully clear, 'cause I think I know where he was going with that, was the, you know, what's he get for his eighty dollars and what does he need to put on top of that? Um, did you get that answered, Don, or was? No?
I kinda gave you a little bit of it, but he, it's.
So, paying eighty dollars?
Yeah.
And I'm sitting there and I've drawn my thing, a black and white TV, and, and, uh, there's nothing on there. Right? What do I do?
You're gonna need to get some sort of smart device.
Yeah.
To convert your black and white TV to a smart TV.
Okay.
Um, and then from there, uh, we would make recommendations on, based on what you wanted for services that, uh.
There've been eighty bucks if I want Hulu on it, or how much?
You'll have to add, uh.
Forty bucks, I'd be one twenty.
Yeah.
Right, if I wanna get.
Netflix for another twelve.
But, but I can look at all those things and see if it's the things I want.
Right. It's an outlet card.
CNN and all that stuff, if they're in that particular package.
Mm-hmm.
So, the difference nowadays is people who wanna watch TV, all you need to get the charter service, they wouldn't need streaming. In our current situation right now, so the difference here, if you have the bundle. It also means people are going to need a smart TV.
They're going to need some sort of smart device or TV, yeah.
Make, or, or buy something that makes your TV a smart TV.
Yeah, that device is about thirty-five dollars.
Right, and that's a one-time thirty-five dollar, so you don't have to add that on all the time, the, the service part of Hulu and all those other. The equipment, so in that it's just a single one-time.
Let's say you have one show you wanna watch for the season, or say HBO, like I'm gonna watch Game of Thrones when the next one comes out. I'll rent it during those three to four months, and then I'm dropping that certain. Not like a package through Spectrum where you're required to pay for it for six months a year or more. So, you really, you, you break away from that contract mentality and give you also a selection as a user, to use your service.
You can also use Google to keep creating email addresses, keep getting the free trials.
Yes, that's true.
Wow.
You've known that as a house, great.
Here's a question.
I just have a quick question, but one is there is a contract that's, so, you know, generally you can find, if there's that eight, then you have to add all the other things on, so we're talking the same dollar amount for a computer that, what you try to then go out and talk to that. The other question I have regarding telephone call, do you anything to do with all the new calls that have been processed through the store?
That's one of the things.
There are a lot of miles in town that have new calls that have to be.
Right, you, you guys are.
I would assume that would be to our benefit. It'd be less, less work to do a make-ready on that call, for sure.
That, we hope we find a lot of that.
Right.
That would be good.
The only downside in that, as I mentioned before, you're gonna sign more of those with three phases, and now pushing the single phase down, possibly constricting your, your work area.
It's more, it's more expensive.
But, yes, to answer your first question, um, I didn't know Spectrum walked away from contract.
I said a question like that.
I had Spectrum last, I had contract. Um, but, yes, it was still, if your services for Spectrum are the same as what you're providing without cable TV, then, yes, some, for some people, they now work out to be their best option. It just comes down to what you need or the level of internet service that provides you a whole, all of them.
I think there's no obligation to the residents to choose it either.
No? That's why we're even looking.
Yes. So, yeah, you could, you could do that and have just internet and not, not need a streaming service if you chose just local.
Again, good effort for your educational part when that comes down.
That's where I'm certain we'll identify a lot of that.
Okay, so you're gonna make up a new IGA?
Yes.
Share it with Bob, I'll send it to legal, and hopefully we'll see you back in a couple of weeks.
And I just, I think, um, our fire chief Poole had a question over here.
That's a good question. If you find the line from this, uh, hey, somebody or dwelling. Um, there's gonna be some kind of box on the outside of the house and wiring into the house. If someone's siding your house, who's gonna be responsible for that connection, you know, relocating it before the siding's done? Or if there's a new, you know, housing built, who's responsible for installing that, um, wire into the house and making that connect outside? There's gonna be some, some stuff on the outside of the house. Is this additional cost to the homeowner? Or is this a one-time, maybe we come through and install a fiber line, just for this one, or when they're.
I don't know.
Revations, or someone needs adjustment, or you have another service after, then they wanna add something. Um, who, who does that, and is there, could be, um, who's always responsible for that?
There can be costs on that side of it, but it would be similar to like in Spectrum, if you wanted to move your cable to another room or something of that nature, it'd be something.
So, you would provide that service, like if we had a certain six, or if we don't want that to happen again, carry on.
No, we could do that. Now, if you guys ever wanted to stand up your own MLP workers or anything of that nature, at some point, Amden could do that. You know, you could have your own technician that's working for your town. And the town, our other question, we would just provide you whatever level of services you need. Um, if you grab to the box on the outside of the home, we usually will schedule, you know, we're, we're gonna have to be in town, we're in most towns regularly, with our technicians and other outside work. But if we have something of the nature where, hey, I need to float line fiber off the house for the next six hours while they side that one side, we would work with the customer to provide that service.
So, there is a box that would go on every home, is how that, so I understand.
Yeah, we call it a NID, Network Interface Device. It actually takes, what we're required to do is the outside plant has to do, transition to inside plant within so many feet. And this provides kind of a key mark where we can test up to the side of your home, and at that point, we can determine whether it's a fiber issue outside the home, leading up to the home, or from inside the home.
This is different than the gray telephone box we're all familiar with?
Very much. It's almost the same.
Okay.
Uh, it just has a fiber splice in it versus a copper connection.
John?
All right, so the transition, fiber to coaxel, or what?
Uh, it actually be Cat Six, so it'd be, this is there, it's. All in now, you know, you have fiber up to the obstacle network terminal, which is the, kind of the motive that's a way of used to. But that, at that point, is key marks the, the light service to a copper thing.
You said Cat Six, so it'd be network cable instead of coaxel?
Yeah, network instead of coax. We're actually getting pretty, we've got some devices that we're now using coax on getting one gig service through, but, uh, they're not tried and true yet, so.
Uh, one more question, John.
No, for the moment, it would be, we would actually provide that as part of the service package.
So, there's no rental fee, right?
No.
Yeah.
Yep, and that does happen from time to time, like with all times.
So, one of the responsibilities of the town is to come up with municipal light plant, organi- governance and organization. And so, I think we would all be interested in what models you think are most effective. I assume a, a board of directors, maybe a director, maybe a part-time or full-time director. But, um, the, the town presumably will set the monthly rate, correct?
Right.
That's always generates some controversy, so we wanna have the right kind of.
That's, that's how you're gonna set the rate, based on your debt. And, and at a fifty percent take, at this rate, you'll pay off your debt and be in the black, you know, short.
Well, fine.
Well, it depends, 'cause, uh, we just had a town that actually requested a rate change and gave all their customers five dollars off their service moving forward.
Right, a higher take rate actually allows us to pay.
Lower rate.
Exactly, higher the take rate, the money coming in, whatever you're paying off, you're.
And then you can use that for other supplemental stuff of your city and town.
And we have, to answer your question about, the hill towns have all different scenarios set up for an MLP board, as I'm sure you're familiar. So, some have one representative from the, the select board on it, others are strictly volunteer, you know, there's enough technology people in the towns that are formed, they're three to five, some have more than that. I, I strongly recommend you don't get more than that. It tends to be a lot. But three to five people who meet as the MLP and report to the Board of Selectmen.
Do any towns have their board of selectmen as the MLP?
Uh, there's a lot that have them as the, the signatory for the MLP. Like, uh, there's other towns that have enterprise funding that they do it through the MLP to purchase the fund.
And I think we would look for something that where the MLP is ultimately accountable, and ultimately controlled by the Board of Selectmen, but also have the ability to make business decisions, as opposed to any pressures for political decisions. So, it's that balance that we look for.
Yeah, okay, you're picking, you're picking out third, so let's get the flop plan done.
That's, that's exactly what, you know, I agree on your presentation.
Okay, so your goal is to come up with a new IGA for that to Bob, Bob will forward to attorney, and we'll meet back hopefully in a couple of weeks.
Perfect.
Great.
Thank you guys for coming. I appreciate it.
Bring those school coupons for Don, stuff like that.
I'll, I'll send them with like nineteen, uh, new email addresses.
So, to walk up and change, that's what grandkids are for, yeah.
What's this? What's this device? Change this video, really?
Yeah, we were called, remote control. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all. Appreciate it, thank you.
Good job, Bob. You got it pretty well covered.
Is that your bag, excuse me?
That's mine, I think, down there.
Oh.
Thank you.
Evacuate, unintended bag. Heard that, chief, there was unintended bag underneath the table. We're evacuating. Okay, ambulance service review, we have one committee member and, and the chief. You're the chief, my line. I don't even wanna want to. Yes, well, we're looking, we're looking for the committee. Yes.
You're on, hey Frank.
Hello. Hello.
Well, gentlemen, Donna, who else is up?
I'm number one, Robin Warner, uh, Lori Dex, Caroline. Uh, my chief's.
In the dream. How often do you meet? Is it quarterly?
We're meeting quarterly.
We're meeting quarterly.
The last time I was.
Okay. So, how is it going? I did get a, uh, just to throw it out there. Cliff mentioned in the last recap, did you see that? That the ambulance account was overspent? But I think, I think that's a clerical thing. But I looked at the monthly things, and if you do the math twelve times a monthly thing, it's the amount appropriate.
Correct.
So, my guess is that one of the June invoices, which was in July, you know what I mean, got credited inside the twelve months, something like that. Instead of like, it came in June, puts the July payment, something, something like that. There seemed to be one extra payment, so I'm not worried about that. Um, quick report, how was it going?
So, um, the reporting that I have, the average response time January to March is four minutes, forty-eight seconds. We get better than that. Total calls to ten, a hundred sixty-seven in town, forty-three mutual aid, Camden ALS, one forty-three, DLS twenty-four, and mutual aid, ALS thirty-eight, and DLS five. I think, um, as Doc and Frank know, the things we have to work on are the timeliness and the accuracy of the reporting, but we're working on that. Um, we need an update on the status of the Hoyo RFP, and I think you guys probably want an update on the CMR one seventy-three.
We'll get, um, I also wanted, had a question from a resident who wanted to attend the next meeting to ask a question about her bill. Uh, lady over in front, I love, when was the next meeting?
Uh, we're due for one.
Any, any questions can go to Action through the committee meeting. And then.
So, she wanted to attend a meeting.
Yeah.
I'll, I'll tell her to contact Bob.
Yeah.
Sue, your point you brought up.
So, um, reporting we talked about, the status of the Hoyo RFP, do we know anything there, Bob or Frank or?
No, uh, at this point, um, the committee has, still has the proposals in their hands. Uh, there, uh, really hasn't been a communication from them. So, we're sort of sitting on the edge of our seats as well, uh, to see what the next move will be.
Do you know if they're still on track for July decision?
I don't feel like they feel that they're, they're feeling a lot of pressure to do anything by July first. We have the contract there through September first. Um, when this process started, they felt like July one would be logical, because that would have, if there were a new provider there, that would give them an appropriate time to get up and underway. But, um, that was never a hard and fast date. It was just sort of something they were shooting for at the beginning of this process. But I would not think it would go much further beyond that, if it does.
And then, um, CMR one seventy-three fifty-five, I thought that would work well to bring up here, because there had been conversation about holding the backup ambulance in town when the primary left until it came back. But the update to that CMR basically says that you're required to, if you have an available ambulance, be in your service zone, which is another thing that we should talk about, uh, you're required to dispatch it, so. Any discussion about that is, 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 I'll find that up here. At least my understanding is that.
So, does that mean mutual aid, it would be called if they're closer, is that what you're saying? Was that mean, if it's a mutual aid ambulance?
Probably answer it more in depth than I can, but.
So, yeah, good evening. The CMR that was, uh, reshared by Western Mass CMS says essentially that if you have an ambulance in your community and somebody calls you, says, we need an ambulance, whether or not you're trying to save the ambulance for the next call in your town, you don't have that choice, you need to send them. It's nothing that really has been seen as enforced. I mean, i- if you think about it, that would mean that every time the city of Springfield was low, they drained all the surrounding communities, um, which is, creates a crater. So, it's something to definitely talk about and, and think about ways to strategically, uh, plan to support our neighbors. plan to support our neighbors as they support us. But it is probably part of a larger conversation. I'm not too sure where it was shared from, what point of view, but it is something that is on the books and something we should all talk about, probably at the EMS meeting.
So say for instance, we have a mutual aid call from an outside community, and our ALS ambulance leaves our district. Are we still supplied under our contract with an ALS ambulance?
Yes, so we always backfill. But here's the thing, so we've had the conversation at the select board meetings, or maybe it was the EMS meeting, actually both. And then Chief Trombley had suggested, well, if we're sending the primary unit to East Long Meadow or Munson or what have you, and we send a backup ambulance that goes into service in Hamden, maybe that backup ambulance then is retained to Hamden until that primary unit returns, just to make sure we're covering Hamden. The CMR effectively says, no, if somebody calls you, they need to go, out of town.
Yeah, can I think to that? And our, our biggest concern has been, how far does that take up? We had a concerning example last week where our ambulance was returning from Bay State and they would dispatch to a call into Palmer. So, you know, this, this really becomes a concern for us, you know. Providing mutual aid to a neighbor community is age-old practice, one we've all encouraged through the years. But when you're going one and two or three times, sometimes communities away from your home base, the time on task begins to be cumbersome and burdensome to the, to the original community. We've, we've also had to deal with this in Brimfield, where we've been sent into Westbrook Field. And, you know, this becomes a problem that we've tried to address through the regional people at O'Leary Farm. Where, where do you draw this line? Because you're in a, you're a community that's invested in your service. And, you know, you've, you've got an ALS service, but there's a lot of communities out there that don't. And when they need that service, they're calling the communities that have made that investment, and sure, you know, you want to do that, but at some point, you could have that ambulance chasing calls all day long, and calls not in your community. So, there, there really needs to be an effort to better define that rule, because as it's written and as it was distributed, there are really no restrictions on it. And it's not the way it's applied, because the example Rock provides is the best one. All day long, communities would be supporting Springfield, because they're, they're always short on the ambulances. So, the providers ourselves have tried to police this. But if the state tries to interject into, and become the bullies when it comes to this, you know, that's when we're probably going to have to ask our communities to step up and lobby, because you've made that investment, and you have secured that, that vehicle and be in play for the region all day long. This is, this is something your citizens have invested in.
So that's not, but that's not exclusive to private ambulance services like we have here. I mean, if, if, if I have in Long Meadow or East Long Meadow, they can call the fire department five times a day to come to Springfield, right?
Correct. And, and that's, and actually our fire, the fire chiefs are going to be our friend in this, because the fire chiefs are very, I guess, they're, they're, the hobby is strong, and they understand that when taxpayers make investments, that there's an obligation that comes along with it, to provide that service. So, I, I think this initiative went out without really thinking about what the, the reaction was going to be. So we're working through this, some of our partners, to try and get this better defined. But, but as written, that is a, a, a real concern to us.
What about, what about your cost with the gasoline and the medical supplies and all that? I see Long Meadow is saying that they don't think they can make their budget this year because of the cost of gasoline and, and medical supplies and that.
Yeah, it's, it has been quite burdened. Not only in cost, but in supplies, as far as the medical side goes, we have had some supply chain issues as well.
How about personnel? I know that we're seeing some issues, obviously in every, every industry, is it affecting you as well?
Devastating. You know, you, you go through money drive-throughs at Dunkin' Donuts or Starbucks, and some of these places are now paying wages that are exceeding our beginning rates. It's most certainly a concern. At our, our basis, our P and L is based on reimbursements that are set by the government. So, we've said 100 times, you know, it doesn't matter what we charge, our reimbursement rates are pretty, pretty well set by the government. And, you know, we don't have the flexibility to increase prices when costs rise. So it, it is a problem, there's no doubt about it, it's a problem.
What percentage of your reimbursements come from government ones, not private insurance companies, ballpark?
65 to 70% are, are based, so, you know, that 30, 35% becomes very important to us.
Do the private insurance companies, what was I going to say? Do they keep, hold you to the Medicare rate or the Medicaid rate?
Yeah, they're, they're as strict as can be, there, there is no flexibility.
What was that CMR number again?
170 dot 355, and I have a question going back to that. All over this CMR, it says, you know, pine received a call, blah, blah, blah. She'll be immediately notified and dispatched in accordance with the applicable service zone plan in 105 CMR 170 dot 510. So one of my questions is regarding this, you know, movement of ambulances around. If we had a service zone in place, which my understanding is we don't, but we should have since like 2006 or eight or something, would that help to address some of these problems?
I think Central Dispatch has that on cards, pretty well figured out, even though I can take a look at it and agree on that. If Central has that figured out as far as, but I mean, we do have this, the, the plan almost completed, but I don't think it kind of, none of this, as far as having it, where it's coming from.
I just wondered if it's, if it designed the zone, you know? And, you know, does that create the need to send an ambulance to set a trauma, one kind of?
I think, I think Donna made a great point, as Frank said there, you're in danger of having no ambulance in town. I mean, that's the only right there.
That's why I wanted to bring this up, if you, if you go and you look at the CMR, all over, it talks about the service zone. And so, I think it's worthwhile to invest.
Intercept, intercept, they never return there, intercept vector.
So, just out of curiosity, based on this, based on this, this new CMR,
It's not new, it's updated.
Based on the updated CMR, would that lead to why our response times fell under 90%? Based on this last report that I have?
I'm not, it depends on which, which form you're looking at, I don't have it in front of me in my vehicle. It could be, depends on how Central is dispatching and where we're going. One thing I'll add, and, and it's likely that that did, like Frank said, we went to Palmer, and we, Hamden was returning from Bay State, stopped off at a gas station, some medics, they were getting low, and then got sent to the Brimfield side of Palmer.
Well, I'm, I'm not talking about like an individual circumstance, I'm just looking at this report, January 1st through April 30th, based on all of the call totals, 188, and 23 of the calls were over eight minutes, so that brings us to an 87% response time.
So we've, the, the way that we've been reporting under, since we've started was, eight minutes was the, the amount of time in town that was a state mandate, but we were talking, we were reporting on 10 minutes or over. So I can look at eight minutes or over, 10 minutes or over was where the, the trigger was for reporting each month.
I think we're talking about two different things, and I, I understand what you're saying about the 10 minutes or over. There was 10 calls over 10 minutes, which is a whole nother topic that I was going to get to in a second, but I'm basing off of the numbers here, you know, you have your, your response times, and, you know, our contract states 90% of calls, eight minutes or less. And, you know, if we, we factor in all the calls here, based on this report that you supplied, we're at 87%. And I know we're, we're close to the number, and I was just wondering if that, you know, the redefinition of that CMR has any effect on the response times?
It, it will, it definitely will, you know why? Because, because when we're busier, that means that we're, we're getting tagged with calls at different positions and returning. So, where we're not, when we don't go as often to, and it's primarily mutual aid, East Long Meadow is number one, Munson's probably number two, Abraham's a little less. Then, if we're going to less, and we're in town available more, responding from 1 to 2 East Long Meadow Road into Hamden. But if we're going mutual aid more and more, which we are, then we're getting toned to calls after we clear the hospital from anywhere from 91 South, all the way to the Hamden line. So that will increase response times in the town of Hamden. I can look at individual occurrences, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna pretty much say that I'm seeing it more and more happen. So, I can't, go ahead.
So, based on 188 calls, 23 of the calls were over eight minutes. And as a parent, I'm concerned that we're not doing anything to try to be proactive, you know, what's, how can we get better at this?
Well, there's parts of town that are going to be more than eight minutes from 1 to 2 East Long Meadow Road as well. And there, there's, there's a recurrent callers to certain areas of town that are going to be greater than eight-minute response from the, the base station. So they ought to factor that in, and then also where the ambulance is coming from. Also, we do supply the mutual aid ambulance whenever it's available. And we also do utilize very little mutual aid. But i- it's a system that works and is a part of a greater system, so that the, the Hamden EMS system is another piece of the puzzle. So the, the regional area, just like East Long Meadows diving in here, and then East Long Meadow will go to Long Meadow, then they need a truck, then Hamden will go to East Long Meadow. So, it depends on where the truck's located, and, and again, where the call is in relation to our home base if we're there.
I, I understand all that, I guess what I'm looking for is what can we do better to bring our percentages up to the contractual level? You know, what, what's not working, I understand there's, you know, there's different parameters, but how can we improve? We need to improve, how can we improve?
That, that's, that's the question, isn't it? It depends on how this CMR plays out, depends on how the staffing and the, this, the town wants to go forward. I mean, the contract is for one 24/7 ALS covered ambulance with backup service. But if they're running ragged, and it's a busy system day, and it's ever-increasing mutual aid, because all the surrounding towns are, are getting exhausted or don't have staffing, what we can do is only supply what we have. And, and meet the contract the best we can. I understand the 87% mark that you're speaking of, and I'll look back at each individual call to quantify exactly why each one of those occurred. But, pretty much, i- it's a reality right now that we're all trying to figure out how to grapple with. It's a system-wide issue, it's, it's a regional-wide issue.
Rock, maybe, you know, a good starting point would be for us to figure out if we can install into this reporting an origination dispatch point. So if, if it's exceeding eight minutes for base, that's a concern. If we're returning from Bay State and it exceeds 10 minutes, we understand why. So let, let's try to track back at those calls and see where we were with dispatch, and that may be a very simple explanation of why it's happening.
Right, and Donna could advise as well that we're...
It seems about right, percentage-wise, Rock, that that would, you know, out of 188, that might be the logical number that we get dispatched to while we're on the way back from Bay State, I don't know.
But I think there's no easy way, there's no easy way back from either area, Wing, Bay State, Mercy, but the whole thing too is, Donna can, can explain this too, we're working with Donna and our reports person in Wilmington to collaborate and generate one big report, rather than having a year-to-date and all these separate reports into one format. So we're all drawing from the same pool, the same data. That being said, what Frank just said is interesting, because the data person can probably draw a column of response origin. Because when we write a patient care report, we have to put where we were when we were dispatched. And that'll certainly be helpful, because that's already a data field, so we can always supply that as well.
Yeah, our, our biggest concern would tie back to the outage time. And that's when we start to worry, you know, if there's a 10-minute response, and it took us three minutes to get out of the building. Now, obviously, that's a crew issue, or there's some compounding factor there. But if it's geography, and it's, you know, we're returning from a, a hospital, you know, that's something that's worth that we talk about. But like Rock said, there's no easy way to get back to those places, but, you know, there may be a point where, you know, we call a mutual aid more. You know, I, or maybe we shorten the distance, Rock, where we call back in service, to five minutes of, attempt, you know, so that we can shorten that time. But one thing we don't want to do is make it, the data point look better, but provide worse service.
Right, and just to be clear, at present, when we're returning from anywhere hospital or our Springfield location for a truck swap, we have the crews call back in service to Hamden when they hit the Jewish nursing home on Congress Street in Long Meadow, because that's proven close enough, or the area of Western New England University in Springfield, if they're coming back that side. So if we need to shorten that a little bit to go to mutual aid quicker, we can do that as well.
Well, I was just going back to the report, January to April reporting, I didn't get the raw data yet for April, so I decided to compare January and March, I tuned off to everything.
It's in the...
But there's the raw data versus what's in that report, some volumes, so that might also, and I don't know yet.
The other question I had too, is I think you mentioned about reporting earlier for more, for more reporting, right? Because there was, you know, 10 calls over 10 minutes, and per the contract, the Board of Selectmen is supposed to be notified with an explanation, I don't think I've ever seen one.
There used to be, and this is one of the things, I mean, in the, you know, completeness of the reporting, there used to be an attachment for a statement as to why everything, you know, like it was way ahead of rock and dandy, or ambulance is coming back from Springfield, or whatever, so there was justification or...
You know, the way it used to be though...
There was one where they talked about the outage time being too long, and now there's a break.
Well, just based on the 10 calls that are over 10 minutes, and you're supposed to report to us within 24 hours with an explanation. I'm just saying, I've never seen one, in the year I've been here, so...
Right, this is only the last quarter, so it could be 40 close.
Could be more, you know, I don't, I don't think I've seen a monthly report in the last year that I've been on the board either.
Is, you know, I, I don't know, I'll ask this question to Frank or Rock. Is this possibly because we didn't have a backup ambulance in town, and this is mutual aid response? That is strictly action calls only in report?
So, the, the, there's, the, the two reporting systems, so I reported, my reporting system is I pull from a data pool and break it down, I give Donna the raw data now, just to go over, so she can, you know, quantify it. And then we have the year-to-date report. We have a guy in Wilmington named Jason who does all the reporting, and he's, he's got that, all the certifications for that type of thing. And it was, it was two separate reporting systems, what happened was, the two reporting systems, they gel fine, but I'm pulling more calls that he's not quantifying the year-to-date, meaning we call them lost calls, where mutual aid come in, it's usually in three to zero a month. And then, also, his report wasn't factoring in when med units from Springfield were doing mutual aid in Hamden, so they, they weren't showing up in the tally. So, the reason why there's been a little bit of a lack in the, the monthly reporting is that I don't want to submit poor data. I've been working with Donna on it, time and time again. So me, Donna, and Jason are going to get together and create a way to do this reporting as one big report. So that it's always there, black and white, clear as day. The over 10-minute ones, I have already put to our dispatching staff to look into, so we can figure out exactly what those are. I will have a report on those 10 you're talking about, probably by Monday, so that I can make sure that it's accurate. It's not a matter of bad numbers versus right numbers, it's a matter of we're pulling from the same pool, but we're not flagging for the same data. So one person needs to do this all at one point in time and submit one full report. So that's where we're at with that. I gotta get myself, Donna, and Jason in a room, and then we'll have just one set of attachments monthly.
So when do you think we did get the last?
The raw data is in the agenda folder.
Of a reason, but, and then over. Like you say, we're supposed to be... You, like you say, we're supposed to be notified of these when they're excess time.
Right.
And I know you said you haven't seen it, and Donna, I've been there a while, I can't recall.
I think the question Ed was asking is, are they, are they ten minutes because they're coming from?
Well, they have reports.
They're coming from Hampden to a mutual aid call, or are they ten minutes in time?
Exactly, I think part of the information on some of the reports should be missed calls, where either the backup ambulance wasn't available, but it was a missed call, and this is why it was ten minutes. Or was it actual action call, put me somewhere, and it was over ten minutes? I mean, it's a little bit of guesswork right now for us all sitting here, trying to figure out.
If it's mutual aid on Wilbraham, there's an extra five minutes there, and that might be the reason.
That could be an explanation to the call.
Sure.
But I think if it was reported to us within twenty four hours, we would have that data.
Again, that's why I'm asking, perhaps this call should be on a report, so we would know not that, oh, this isn't that.
Yeah.
I guess.
Makes sense.
I mean, it's not to say, but it would make more sense that some of the over ten minutes would be the fact that you had a mutual aid, you know, it's coming from Wilbraham or.
Right, or was this a call not even in Hampden, did it go to? So I, I don't know, or they're all.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking at the numbers that they provided us, you know, straight from action, so. These are supposed to be all handed calls, based on what they said.
The raw data that uh, was shared with Donna is in the agenda folder.
And I created one.
I'm looking. That one. Yours is different than that?
That's why we're having.
Right. Right, so. I'm just going off the numbers that they provided, so that's.
Yeah, I know. But like Rock said, we're trying to get it straightened out. Like for volume, I showed a difference in the raw data. Uh, and for transports, I showed a difference.
I seem to remember the last ambulance oversight committee meeting that I attended, it was the same explanations though data being wrong and coordinating, so it doesn't seem like it's a new thing. Am I, am I right in saying that, from what you remember? Yeah.
Yeah, you are. It it actually has been a complication of the computer system uh, that we have tried to manually overcome and to to run programs. So I mean, the the detail is significant, but the what is significant is we haven't provided you with the information that you need. So I I don't think there's that many calls over ten minutes that we just can't go in and handpick them and find out what the heck the reasons were and get them. Uh, there there's no use for not doing them. So that that is just something we're going to do, and we're gonna do it right away.
We have to get to a point, Frank, as you know, of meeting all the items in the contract. Now, in a way that we can all go down the numbers, you know, uh, section four.
The 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 request is is clear. You get it done?
But the response time, you know, average, you get average in January to March, four forty eight.
Right, you know, when they're good, they're good. It's just the, you know, the.
You're that person that's afraid.
I'm just concerned, you know, that we have a big community, you know, what happens if you're that one person, you you need something immediately.
Yeah, I get it.
Are we up to date on all our financial reports and recaps and stuff and all the other things?
Yeah, the conversations that we've had, um, basically, like, we need to nail down the reporting, and if it's correct, we can go back and look at that first year.
Okay, because we're coming up to the third year. You know, so we're going into potential.
Well, the October, the October last year was the first year report.
Good.
And once we get this reporting to a place where we agree on the number, then we can go back to that same methodology and just go back and revisit that first year of report summation that we got. But those are the conversations that we had. Very open.
I understand, so what I was saying is, we're coming into the third year, so potential renegotiation for an extension of the contract. When do you think we'd see a report so we'd have that data? Yeah, I'm sure you're eager to see it too. Yeah, right.
For financials?
Right.
Um, I can request them, I, it's always, what, three months past the contractual year? So I can, I mean, they could probably put together something as a preview, but it won't be finalized till three months past the contract um, anniversary.
But Rock, before we do that, like we taught, we need to disagree on the report.
For, well, if we're talking times and and numbers, yeah, so the billings, the billing, the billings occur. Um, we can, we can go back and corroborate the reports, and like we talked about, Donna, the 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 disagreement between the two data polls is typically anywhere from uh, two to six calls or something like that because of the data draw selections. I'm selecting everything, anything that happens in the zip code, whereas the year to date is looking at certain aspects. That's why we gotta get with Jason and just have these all done. And once he puts together the 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 way he pulls them, we can regenerate anything we need to just pull it back and review it again. So you, myself and Jason certainly need to get together and Frank, and just uh, put our heads together how we're gonna do this perfectly, and I'm sure that there's gonna be uh, several layers to it. But once we have it all done, finalized, we want it, we can, we can go back and redo all of it, and and just uh, re-review it all.
Donna, do you have a method that you've been using for data? You, that whole, that's, I think, I didn't see it until this afternoon, so I haven't gone through that. Yeah, and and you have your own formulation of how you calculate the times and stuff. Yeah, okay. And so are you saying the way that you do it and the way that they do it are, they're they're different?
Well, I take the raw data, I don't know actually what they do.
Okay.
Um, I do know at what start of the conversation, as soon as I saw this, uh, there's differences in, you know, like January, March, February.
Differences based on your calculations and their calculations?
This is the raw data.
The raw data.
This is the raw data, we agreed on the methodology, these are the numbers that I have.
Okay.
But they're different than.
The numbers I have.
Orange one.
Okay. Gotcha.
So where we are is, how do we account for those differences?
How would you?
Our numbers, our numbers should match.
You're right.
And when they do match, then I think we should go back and we should look back.
Based on this report and based on your report, how different are the numbers?
Well, like I told you, the volume is off by seven, January to March, it's not a huge number, if we say three months, right? But it's a number. And the transport, non-transports are off by fourteen.
Good or bad?
Well, the raw data is fourteen one.
Okay.
So that's why I'm saying, you know, like, maybe your your percentage of volume is one of the two. If you're talking percentage points, it might just be a sale, it's ninety, I don't know.
Right.
Because all I have is data.
Right.
Huge big stream of.
Sure.
You know. I thought, um.
Okay. I wrote this. This is all, this is all my stuff. Yeah, this is just my notes I wrote.
Chief, uh, Scotty, are you getting um, monthly reports?
No, I'm not.
Okay. Rock, do we know why?
Yeah, I send the year to date monthly to Bob and Donna right now. Um, the other breakdowns or the problem that we're having, like Frank mentioned. Um, but they're all easily to pull if there's specific explanations needed. And then this is another reason why myself, Donna, Frank, you're gonna room with the person who generates the reports for our company in our headquarters to put it all into one monthly process. But the year to date report, I send to Bob, Donna, and I think that's it for them to disperse.
The contract does mention monthly reports to the police chief. I wonder why that.
Yeah, no, it mentioned, it mentioned monthly reports to the police chief, and then it changed to the fire chief. I think it changed back to police chief, so I was just sending it to whoever can disperse. I can add anybody you want, but I'll I'll send it to the whole group going forward.
They were going to Bob and everybody until we got into this debacle with the, you know, the discrepancies. So you want what you think is not accurate reporting being distributed to everybody?
Well, I'm only asking because we're going by what the contract is. It says the police chief, he said it was going to the fire chief, but I thought I just heard him say it was going to Donna and Bob.
And then we, we, we fan them out.
Because initially, initially it was Chief Farnsworth, and then it went to Chief Poole, and I believe it's back to Chief Trombley. And then the data, like I said, the data that we're pulling between year to date and what I'm pulling, if it, if I'm not confident that it's gonna gel with the both reports, because there's something missing, I'm not gonna send wrong data.
Yeah.
I do not want to do that. And I I don't want to omit my responsibility for reporting at all. We, me and Donna talk weekly, pretty much, sometimes more than that. I just want to make sure that we're providing accurate information. If we're not providing accurate information, I don't want to just do it as a, as a, you know, an exercise. So we're trying to make sure that this is going to be sifted out.
Donna, I appreciate your attention to this. I know this is a service you're doing as a volunteer, and it's tremendous work. What's your plan going forward? We're completing year.
What's my plan?
Well, we're completing year two, okay? We have a question here, we have some discrepancies, how we're gonna come up with between raw data and the finer report. What do you want to see happen?
What I would like to see, and these are the conversations we've had, is that we get together and we compile a report that we agree is accurate.
Yeah.
And then we use that template, that same template, and retroactive, bring everything current, and then from current day, we'll pull it. And meet the contract requirements on a monthly basis.
Sounds good.
Yeah, these guys know, you know, compliance with the contract is important.
Right, so is that something you're gonna work with Rock and Bob as a, or the committee is gonna work as a whole, if possible?
We find a committee and we have to work.
I understand that, the committee is on, you know, because of work constraints, and we all have them, are we looking for new committee members? Not that we're, not that they're beating down the door, we talked about committees the past meeting.
They are, we can just make it happen. Sometimes you need to do things yourself, and you get it done and have it, you're right.
All right, you guys are gonna get the the data all together, right? Correct, for the same page?
Yes. Yeah.
I'm gonna send it to everybody. Got it?
And so I'm going to say, yes, I feel it's true to remember.
Well, I agree with Rock's point that, you know, he doesn't want to keep sending out wrong, wrong data. Let's come up, let's narrow it down, come up with the answers, but get that, so. Uh, Bob, keep this on your tickle list, and I'll see if we can regroup in two weeks and get back to it. Again, thank you, gentlemen, Action and Donna, thank you for coming, and thank you for your work on this.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
That is all.
Yeah, with the, say, service zones? One seventy, three fifty five.
Well, I'm gonna need to find out what happens in Tampa.
When I spoke with the mayor, he said three things. Number one, he thought that uh, all the contracts at Hollyoak should be rebid. And so that's a matter of routine that, number two, we haven't made a decision. Number three, he said, we thought we were getting good services from Action. He didn't say they're gonna recontract, he just said the services are good, and well, we're going to make a decision a little later on, so.
But these guys are a pleasure, love it. I just need to see them, that's mine. I like them too.
One and one equals two.
Thank you, Donna.
Thank you, well, thank you all.
Let's just quickly jump to the minutes, since I skipped past them twice. These are the minutes of May second, twenty twenty two.
All right.
Signorelli. How was Hillborough?
Well, news is different.
How was Hillborough, she's asked you a bunch of ways. The world, this is the world, so.
Yeah. Motion to approve, May second, twenty twenty two.
Second, all favor?
Aye.
Pam, I'll go with the next, thank you. Okay. Uh, Town Hall Capital Accessibility Study, Bob, I just think that's in your report anyhow, that you're reaching out to that.
Yes, uh, there were, we've, we've reached out to five companies to come and do this, including the company that did the work
Yep.
in two thousand seventeen. The only company that has responded is Tie and Bond, and what we sent out today was a message from Tie and Bond that they, remember earlier I said that, uh, they they told us that they couldn't do anything until the summer. Well, tomorrow's the first day of summer, so they're gonna come in next week.
So you do a walk through.
Do a walking tour, and I think we, the discussion uh, also today, uh, the message that that I read today uh, to bring up tonight was a suggestion that should we have them also do an evaluation of T W B?
Well, we did want to get all municipal buildings done anyhow, and of course, the fire station's pretty current, the, obviously, highway department is pretty current, the owner won't, don't have a current. Here's the building, because we did a key in T W B, right up with Roy Brown in twenty sixteen anyhow, back at the middle school time. That wouldn't be a bad update. Is there a cost to them coming over and doing this, or is this just due diligence on their part with an eye towards giving a quote?
As far as I understand, they're going to come and do a walkthrough and then provide a quote.
The walkthrough is for free?
Yes.
Is my question.
Yes. So, but you know, if there's going to be a decision in the future.
I think they should walk through both.
Based on numbers. Uh, I would think a town meeting would challenge uh, any decision, let's say, to renovate here, when someone will say, have you looked at that possibility over there? And we say, we don't have numbers on that, so.
From a due diligence standpoint, it's a town building, we own it, we should know what shape it's in anyhow, so.
We get a free walkthrough, and then they're gonna give us a price, so if the board wants.
You use the magic word, Tom, it's a free walkthrough.
Yes, yeah. If the board wants to include T W B in the price of the the project, by the way, they're gonna be looking at accessibility issues in the other buildings, minimal though they are, so that we can submit an accessibility plan to the State Office of Disabilities.
And then go back to also Craig's point before, where with the mechanicals, the HVAC, the electrical, things like, you know, the bones.
Structural.
Yeah.
I'm old.
Okay, great, so keep us in.
I think, just to, just to touch on what Bob said real quick, though, I mean, do you want to rope this building and T W B into the same project? Or do we want to have them as two separate bids?
I'd like them in two separate reports.
Yeah, right. Okay.
Okay, and now the fun one. South Road Tree Removal.
Board should have the email thread uh, for this.
Yeah, back last year.
That Don sent.
Yeah, well, if I could recap, and Don and I were here at that time, basically, they wanted money to from the town to treat the entrance part, because they would take care of the internal part. They said, well, we think we'll need five thousand, so if they find, we'll add five thousand to the budget. Came back, did the work, our estimate was off. I'm sorry, you asked for an amount, we got it for it.
Do we actually have an actual estimate from companies that did the tree work, or?
I, no, we relied on them to come up with the estimate.
You should have, you have the package.
There's no estimate in there, though.
No estimate, that's the bill.
That's just the actual bill.
That's the bill.
The only estimate we have is Dana's estimate is at five thousand dollars.
That's right.
Now, did they expand the scope of work and have more done from the estimate? Who's to say? But they said it would take this much, we said, fine, we'll put it in the budget. We went to the town meeting, so we need five, fifteen for the park, got it passed and.
It looks like they did three separate areas, no, three separate um, days. You know, two in November, November eleventh and November nineteenth, and then again on December ninth. But it says here in their, in their bill that additional day was approved on twelve two. So they were already over budget at that point. They're over budget, and then they approved an additional four thousand dollars of work after that.
And did the scope of work change?
That's what I want to know, I don't know, you just.
It was gonna be this much, and you.
So, and there, there's also in here too, they have the time sheets for the laborers. So I see a time sheet for eleven eleven and a time sheet for eleven nineteen. But I don't see a. So I see a time sheet for eleven eleven and a time sheet for eleven nineteen, but I don't see a third time sheet for the December December work. So I just, no, that's just a duplicate, so I don't know if it didn't get added by mistake or or if there's just, you know, where's the third time sheet, just so we can verify that work was done there.
Now, Bob, you did mention in an email that you had discussion with one of the principals about potential applications for ARPA money. And I'm not an expert in ARPA, but I don't see whether that qualifies.
Yeah, I mentioned it, but certainly didn't make any commitment. I said, you know, if we're looking around for money, there are a couple of places we could look. Also had a discussion with Doug about maybe using community preservation funds.
Which would require a town meeting action.
Yes.
So they've got an outstanding bill. All right, when we go back to, does ARPA allow this type of?
The term they use is government services. So in some ways it is a government service. And I think before we would include any funds from ARPA, we would have to make a call to Boston.
Or we treat this as an overrun in the tree ward expense account or whatever we covered it for before and look for a transfer from another account if we feel it's justified.
He got eighteen thousand left on his account.
Because Park Rec hasn't spent any of theirs yet. Well. And they've had every opportunity to as well.
Well, five, they're five thousand, he says five thousand still.
Hasn't been claimed by the conservator or by the, you know.
Run another turn.
And I think, Greg, you have reached out to Park Rec and reminded them.
Yeah, I talked to them last, I talked to Parks last week, they had the quotes and they had the work orders. I don't know where they're going for as far as initiating the work.
And they worked through conservation, got approval to do that work as well, and that must have held up that part of it.
What happens when, let's start with Park Rec, what happens when July first comes?
Then they're out that money.
It was, it's not like a separate, it wasn't a separate warrant article.
The money goes away, gets swept into free cash.
Right, so the question is.
Unless there's a contract.
When do you, when is there?
And a commitment to spend.
That I don't know. They think they met.
There are two things that could happen here, a couple of things could happen. One is Park Rec is not going to be able to get the work done before the end of fiscal year. And Doc can say, well, there's money in the account, cover the overage with the money that was appropriate for tree work. And if one department didn't use that, well, it's still there. It's an allowable expense. Park Rec could come up with the appropriated expenditure before the thirtieth. And we could treat it as an overage and ask for a transfer from something.
But.
Or we say, look, you had a quote, if you spent more than that, we're sorry.
But did they have a quote?
Well, it came to us and said they had a quote.
Let's go back to the Parks and Rec issue, though. If the Parks and Rec is eighteen thousand dollars left over in the tree, in tree removal. If they fifteen, if we give, if they if they work out their thing, fifteen, and we give the five thousand to. You know, when two thousand dollars was spent, another.
Right, which is probably actual expense money, maybe for marking.
They both can't get their money.
Well, I'm saying that two thousand, which tree warding probably are marking fifty thousand trees might have needed the money.
Yeah, I'm not, as I'm telling you, we're going to be two thousand bucks.
Definitely, yeah.
I haven't seen a quote. I think that five thousand dollar number came from our tree warden.
Well, yeah, but they also sat here in high school, it wasn't like we came up with it, they came to our meeting.
We put it in the budget, we put it in the budget in the town meeting vote board.
Right, so we need about five thousand, okay. If they accept ten, as you.
And it's just to build off that, I would think, you know, if they came to us with the dollar amount, you would think that when they went out to hire somebody, they said, we have this money.
Right.
Is this feasible? So either it was at the time or it wasn't or something came up.
Oh, we only have five thousand bucks cut down.
Cut down five thousand worth.
We'll see you next year for the other two.
And here's the other thing, if that happened, then oh my gosh, why didn't you say it then?
Or if they went over by a little bit, like, okay, things happen. But then to approve a third day a month later without saying, hey, we're already over budget and now I'm approving additional work on top of that.
Then and then still come back.
And then still come back.
So, starting, I'd like to admit from Park Rec where they, you know, they can't get it done, it's kind of a simple solution.
Right.
For where, I hope they can get it done, but we're down to what you said down before, nine days in a fiscal year, a lot of stuff.
Well, if they have a contract or an agreement or something in writing, Cliff will encumber funds. Meaning you can spend beyond the end of the fiscal year.
For Parks and Rec?
Yes, yes.
It's never been done before.
No.
We've had bills where it's been dated, we've never encumbered money open-ended past the end of a fiscal year. It's a little.
If you want to get into that, you.
I don't think so, because you could do that with every account, just.
And everybody's overspending.
Right, let me encumber some desk money and I'll buy that tank in December. Uh, no, it's the same, it's an old Pandora's box right there.
Well, I'll move that we reimburse the, for the town meeting, no, the Menachant Land Trust, five thousand dollars.
Can I just ask a question on that first?
We'll ask the chair for the chair, please.
Would he, would he, would we reimburse them the original agreed-upon amount or are we reimbursing them an additional? Because they've already been approved for five thousand.
The original, the original five thousand dollars as per the town meeting vote.
Here's the other thing that could happen, they could come to our meeting next week, make a good case work. The stuff we had done, it was worse than we thought, it was still in the scope of work. Would you approve transferring money, more money into tree warding, what you could do line to line, reserve fund? Basically plead the case to us directly rather than through an intermediary and we may not be getting the right story for all of that. Well, we had a couple of what-ifs, well, what if it was this?
Actually, this letter went to Attorney Martell.
Who has been the, their.
Who's middle name was the doctor?
Oh.
Oh, I see.
Yeah.
There's another letter that you'll find in your packet, I think, did you, did you put this letter that came in today in the packet? So there's, it's another reason to meet with them next week. This is a request from the Park and Rec Committee.
I was talking about the.
Yeah.
No, I was talking about the.
Take a Menachant.
Land trust.
Oh, the land trust, okay.
So I agree that we should release the five thousand that over the town. If they need more, put them on the agenda for next week.
I will second Don's motion.
All favor? Reach out to them, Bob, to see if they want to come.
Okay.
Can you, when you do reach out to them, Bob, can you ask them if they have the worksheets for the third day in December?
Okay.
Uh, the, the, the final agreement with six oh one Main Street, the text looks pretty good.
Mm-hmm.
The one thing that Art reached out and says they're looking for a gate in July. This kind of goes to what I just talked about before, since that account has been swept. Since they have bought the equipment, installation, that's the date, but the purchase is done in this year.
We're just, we're just, uh, valid for the.
Basically, yeah.
So we're doing, yeah.
Yeah. Um, I think that's all, so you're working with Rose and Bob, you're working with Rose and the people that get that done, okay? And you have a variance, Bob?
I do, we have.
Pictures of the place?
Yeah, it's all here, all mapped out if you want it. I got the actual info here somewhere, I don't know where it went, lost it. Session, so we have, we have a variance for nineteen six inch drive, reduction in separation between septic absorption systems and high groundwater, four feet instead of five feet.
I'd recommend it, Bob.
Uh, did it cool?
Move approval, I'll second that.
All favor?
Aye. Park and Rec memo, Greg.
Yeah, you have it there.
Yeah.
Came in this afternoon.
I think we should push this off until next week so that it wasn't on our original agenda and then we can discuss this next week.
Well, why don't, give me a subway.
I, this is the first time seeing it too, so.
It just came in today and I suggested that you weren't going to take action tonight, we would just distribute it to you and you'll take some action next week.
For fun, well, we're on Park and Rec.
Not happy with basketball? Have we, have they, what's the status of vacation?
Um, when I talked to the chair last week, she said they had eight interested party. And possibly a second. They were going to reach out to see their interest, as far as I know.
All right, okay, right. And the one who doesn't want to be on it is on a committee of our choosing, right now? Stop the ambulance.
Well. Maybe more.
Or maybe it could be a water commissioner, whoever. All right, um, selection reports.
Um, last week I had reported strategic planning, I was wrong in the date, it's actually tomorrow.
Oh, have fun.
So.
Where are you meeting?
We're meeting at the high school tomorrow.
Excellent. Is that the last day of school or when was it?
Last day of school is Friday.
It was last week, I know Springfield links tomorrow.
I had a road report.
Springfield ended today.
No, it's a day tomorrow and then half day tomorrow, I think.
I think it was half day today.
The planning is being tomorrow night, the C O A last week. We have, Mark did send along a picture of the building, which is moving on pretty well.
Mm-hmm.
I think, what else, he has no answer on the truck at this point, he's contacted the dealer. They have not canceled the order, which they did with some towns, but no delivery date on the truck. Which, of course, impacts Park Rec because they're hoping to put the hand-me-down. However, Mark is servicing any of their needs they have, you know, transporting back and forth. Uh, the excavator is in, he's hoping to pick it up tomorrow, which will allow him then to do the work. The pipe work, which the town approved it along third base at the softball field, you know, when he said that'll be done.
That come in recently?
Just in, so they're picking it up now, and I said.
Cool.
Which I assume then at the end that goes to you for title and insurance and all that stuff.
Fun stuff.
That's a town master report.
Okay, um, as we come to the end of the year, we've applied for a reimbursement from the Commonwealth for expenditures under the municipal vulnerability program of two hundred and seven thousand, three hundred and eighty dollars. I mentioned earlier tonight with Whip City, this middle mile funding that's in the federal infrastructure legislation. Uh, those applications are due by the end of September with decisions, um, March one. And the amount of money you can apply for is eye-popping.
Do it.
So, yes, so.
Max it out.
I, you know, with their encouragement certainly and probably will be helping, asking them to help with the application. We'll put one in. I had a staff meeting, a special staff meeting last week to talk about posting on the website as well as, um, uh, putting committee agendas on the website and, and minutes and so forth, so. See how it goes, we did get a request from John Plaster for an account so that he can start posting. I tried to set that up today, but apparently it's not yet working, but we'll get it working. A question for the board, when do you want to schedule Tekton Architects to discuss the fire station proposal? Recall that the chief contacted them and they've agreed to come in and talk to you.
We've just put a couple of things presented for next late week, let's see how you make out with scheduling those people.
All right.
Otherwise, I think, aren't we off, are we off two weeks after that though?
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Your telephones are installed, mine isn't working well.
I gotta say, you're right.
And this startling announcement that the town had three hundred and nineteen Uber and Lyft trips in fiscal two thousand twenty-one. Our, our dispersment from the tax on these rides will amount to thirty-one dollars and ninety cents, so.
Are they coming to town or away from town, do we know?
I, I asked some questions and.
Nobody knows.
No, nobody does. My guess would be that most would probably be coming into town, picking up the Ubers in the larger communities, maybe. Green communities, as I mentioned last week, P V P C will do the application and help the town. But they are out of funding for this year, their funding ran out at the end of May. If we want to go forward, it will be seventy-five hundred dollars that we would have to find. There is a, a category when you file ARPA funds for contracts. And so I think that would be a legitimate place to find money. And so, what do we want to do there?
Well, is there any leftover account that we could transfer from like temporary help, we must have.
Okay, well, look, let me, let me meet with the, I mean, Cliff usually comes in.
If we wanted to close that, if we wanted to go ahead and pay it out this year's.
Okay.
With temporary help, we also got, it's like, it's like the expense.
Yeah.
Okay. And that's, that's the report. I don't have any other information on any of the applications that we've put in for additional grant funding.
All right, you've got a meeting tomorrow morning at ten.
Yes.
Excellent.
The second tranche of ARPA money is now available and will be sent to the town. They gave us half in June of twenty-one, half in June of twenty-two. There's some bureaucracy involved in this, we have to have a SAM.gov account.
Do you have one before?
Well, that's it, we have a DUNES number, you don't get a DUNES number without, without having a SAM.gov account with the federal government. I had asked Pam today, we were unable to find any old SAM account, so I applied for a new one. And once we get that, then we can schedule the, the last payment for ARPA money. So if you, if you find, if you find any information about an existing account.
Yeah, I'm going to look for.
It would be easier and better to renew it rather than apply for another one. And I don't know how you got the DUNES.
Right, right.
The DUNES thing, number without having the SAM account. Oh, I know, that's, that's an old number. But they're phasing out DUNES numbers. There's a new one now that you get through the SAM.gov account, so.
Okay, and he has to come before the board.
Second.
Such one could do, thank you all, have a good week.
Aye.